Kevin, this language is for this?
Yeah. One of the approvers and I've got some other. I'm good. Susan's good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to call the November 17, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We will start with an invocation that will be delivered by our county manager Lance Metzler. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll introduce Mr. Levi Sharp at that time. So if everyone would please rise for the invocation.
If you will, please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, lift you up to our county leaders who are entrusted with responsibility to govern and serve. Grant them wisdom and discernment as they make decisions that affect our county. May they lead with integrity, compassion, and a commitment to justice. Surround them with counsel that is pure, peace-loving, and full of mercy. Help them to seek the common good, to act with humility, and serve with a heart for all people, especially the most vulnerable. We pray for unity among our leaders, that they may work together in harmony to build a community that reflects your love and grace, protect them from division, and guide them past the righteousness. May your peace reign in their hearts and in our county now and always. In your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And tonight, we are joined by Mr. Levi Sharp. And Levi is 11 years old. He is homeschooled, and he recently won first place at the state fair for his 4H recycled art project. So Levi, if you would come up front, everyone would give the appropriate salute. Levi is going to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Levi. Next, we have a couple of recognitions. I'm going to hand it over to Lance Metzler, our county manager, to recognize the participants in the state senior games.
Okay, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners. It is an honor to congratulate the participants of the 2025 Senior Games. The North Carolina Senior Games began in 1983 with a vision to create year-round health and wellness for individuals over the age of 50. Today, there are over 60,000 participants in 54 local programs that serve all 100 counties across the state. Their goal is to be more active, to learn new skills, to renew old talents, to live better and healthier, and to have more fun. The Senior Games took place on April 22, 2025 through May 23, 2025. Rockingham County was represented by 32 citizens at the North Carolina Senior Games in Raleigh and surrounding areas. Participants competed in various sports, including billiards, cornhole, disc, throw, golf, mini-golf, pickleball, shot put, swimming, track. They received a total of 21 gold medals, eight silver, and nine bronze, with a total of 38 medals won. Joining us and congratulating are Rockingham County participants.
Thank you. Daniel, was it better process? Go down or?
Yes, perfect.
Oh, you'll get a better picture.
You don't have to text.
All right, I can get you anything you want. Just let me know. Oh, yeah, we're gonna find a way.
Actually, Houston.
All right, let's scooch everyone a jiffy a little bit more.
Houston had brought it up.
You like each other for five minutes.
Okay, this next recognition is for Carly Rae Revis, recognizing her tonight for a
That's all we need. That's all we need.
Give lefts, give lefts.
There we go. Do everybody see me? I think I can see everybody. All right, we're gonna do a couple of different ones, okay? One, two, three. All right, one, two, three. One more. Two, three.
November 17, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. Originally, Commissioner Barrow had called me and told me about this exciting news, followed up by Commissioner Callum, that this young lady competed. I had no idea, but I'm very proud of her, and I'm sure Rockingham County will when they find out what she has done. We're honored to congratulate Carly Rae Revis tonight. Carly is eight years old and is in third grade at Bethany Elementary School. She has been playing softball since she was five years old and was her first competition in the past July. She first won McMichael Baseball, Major League Baseball Pitch Hit and Run Challenge. She then competed and placed first in the Regional Challenge in Washington, D.C. The top five performers in each group across the nation advanced to the National Championship, which was hosted by the World Series in Toronto, as the Major League Baseball, Toronto Blue Jays, hosted the first two games versus the Los Angeles Dodgers. Carly finished first in the hit, pitch, and run competition, making her the seven/eight-year-old girls' national softball champion. She's been described as humble, soft-spoken, hard-working, and determined, all attributes of a champion. Congratulations, Carly. If you would, come up.
Congratulations, Carly.
Bring the whole crew.
So Carly, I'm gonna give you your certificate here, and then I just have a couple of questions for you. So who were you pulling for, the Dodgers or the Blue Jays?
The Dodgers.
Okay. And then I also want to know, what was your favorite thing about Canada?
It was beautiful.
It was beautiful. That's great. Well, thank y'all again so much for coming, and we don't have a whole lot of national champions around here, so you should be proud, and you should be proud, and thank you all very much.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. Four, five, six, seven.
Seven, eight. Awesome. Incredible feat. We don't have that on there. Next, it's not printed on there, but we need to approve tonight's agenda, and we do need to remove item D1. So with that removal, do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Motion by Commissioner Richardson. Second by Commissioner Hall. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye. Then we come to public comment. We do have someone signed up to speak. There are rules related to public comment, so Lance, if you would, read those rules, please.
Yes, sir. The public comment period shall be for the purpose of allowing members of the public to present any matter pertaining to county business or items on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Remarks shall be addressed directly to the Board of Commissioners and not to the staff, audience, or media. The chairperson, Sha Allen, has done open the public comment period. Any speaker who wishes to speak shall approach the podium and not speak from his or her seat. Each speaker should clearly state his or her name and physical address when he or she approaches the podium. Each citizen shall be allotted three minutes. We only have one person, so I'm not going to go over the rest of that part. And your time will be displayed on the monitor in front of you. The clock will start with three minutes. You will hear a beep at one minute to alert you to wrap up your comments. If you're... I skipped that part, too. Speakers will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person or which, when directed at a public official, is not related to his or official duties. The Board of Commissioners may accept written comments in lieu of oral statements. Written statements can be delivered at the county manager's office. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Melissa Effer.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Effer. I reside at 167 Oakleaf Drive in Reedsville, North Carolina. Chairman Berger and Commissioners. My husband and I moved to Rockingham County from another state about 10 years ago, and initially found the area to be a good fit for us and our employment opportunities. While we understand that we are somewhat outsiders in this area and do not have name recognition to make a difference, we do pay taxes and we vote. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am grateful for you, the people that feel the call to service in your capacity, and challenge those who condemn you, to take up the torch and run for these positions. We've watched and heard how people have run down this board for holding others accountable. After all, that is the reason I elect people, to say and do what I'm not in the position to do. I expect my elected leaders to look after the interests of those who cannot. That is what we are all called to do, is to hold one another accountable for their actions. I come before you to address an ongoing hot topic of controversy in the county. I want to thank you all. Yes, you heard it. Thank you for bringing to light the numerous issues regarding the Rockingham County Detention Center. Devastatingly, I found out firsthand the many deficiencies in the operations of the Detention Center. In my humble opinion, these deficiencies ultimately led to the untimely death of my son, Kyle Kepley. My son was taken to the detention center on failure to appear for traffic violations and was placed under a $25,000 bail. Seems extreme to me, given the offenses of others who get a slap on the wrist and let go because they may know someone or work somewhere in particular. The two-tiered justice system has no place in such a small community. While my son was somewhat justly placed in the detention center, basic operational protocols were ignored, falsely recorded, and denied. How can continued failed jail inspections not lead to disciplinary actions against those responsible? I understand a burned-out lightbulb or some graffiti on the walls. That is minor and not life-threatening. However late and altogether missed rounds to check on inmates is dangerous, which can and has led to the deaths of not just my son, but numerous others. Who is ultimately responsible for the Detention Center? Why is that person or persons not being held accountable for their failure to perform their duties? The good-ol' boy network in this county runs deep and will lead to its further decline if we don't take some kind of action. My son did break a law, and he was held accountable. That accountability ultimately led to his death, which was a very high price to pay. We must hold those who have sworn an oath to uphold their duties that same accountability. A reply letter to the state saying they had meetings and were taking corrective actions time after time after time just doesn't cut it. After the incident, I tried to contact people to find out what happened and how this could happen, but was repeatedly shut down or just ignored. I had no idea who could help me understand or provide answers to my questions, until a call from an attorney from the North Carolina Disability Rights alerted me of the various courses of action I could pursue, and let me know that this was not the first time for the Rockingham County Detention Center to be at the center of a state inspection.
Ms. Effer, I'm sorry, but it didn't ding, and it was... it should have.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm wrapping up. I have said my piece, and I appreciate your continued service to all the people of Rockingham County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Effer. That is the only person that has signed up. Next, we do have some public hearings, and we will start with Mr. Jason Byrd.
Before you, you're going to see the reason for our hearing tonight. It's a change to North Carolina General Statute 106-740. This pertains to public hearings on agricultural land. This is part of the voluntary ag district program, is what this law pertains to. The main change in this law is just, we shall have public hearings, other than we may. So it's just going to require us to have those in the future. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Any questions at this point in time?
Mr. Chair, I'll for a motion and approval.
Just a second. Before we do that, and we'll let you do it, we need to open and close the public hearing.
Sorry.
Nobody signed up to speak, so with that, we'll open the public hearing. Since no one signed up to speak, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Now, I believe...
Motion remains.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Richardson. Second by Commissioner Barrow. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, sir. Next, we do have a rezoning matter, and we'll hand it over to Mr. Adam Barr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before us tonight is zoning planning case 2025-12. This is a request to go from residential agriculture, RA, to highway commercial. The tax pin for the record is 891-307-688521, and the property is currently addressed as 173 Allen Road. This is coming to us as a conventional rezoning, and as I'm sure you're all very familiar with, when we have a conventional rezoning, we're going to be looking at all of the potential land uses that are permitted in this instance, the RA zoning district, and compare those to the highway commercial. Nothing site-specific here. The planning board did see this at their October meeting and then voted for recommending This is the vicinity map. As you can see, this is going to be kind of on the eastern side of Reedsville, pretty close there to the city limits. This is the zoning map. Here, we can see that the majority of the area is on the county side, is going to be mostly residential agriculture, as well as some RP there in the yellow. The lighter green color there, that is where we're going to see the city of Reedsville's zoning jurisdiction. Right there along Grooms Road, where the purple is, is going to be some highway industrial on the county side, and then once you go further west on Grooms Road, you'll see the I2s there. That's going to be a Reedsville zoning designation for industrial. This map didn't quite make it to your packets, but I did want to include this as well, just to show you all some further context. This kind of highlights a little bit better, I think, the city limits portion and everything, as well as just kind of its proximity to 29. And then this is a little bit, kind of zoomed-in version of the aerial. As you can see, kind of directly near it, we're mostly looking at residential properties, wooded areas, some open fields, and then there to the west, where we have that green overlay for Reedsville's jurisdiction, you'll see some of that industrial. As far as the land use plan goes, this does designate the area as G1, which is, characterizes the county's low-density growth area. The G1 generally is looking to have zoning designations of RA and sometimes things like RM as well. So this doesn't quite 100% fit in with the land use plan in this area, but staff does still recommend approval, mostly on reasonableness grounds, due to the high proximity of other even more intense zoning districts there in the area. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is here. They didn't sign up to speak, but if there's any questions that they can answer, they'd be happy to.
I have one, Adam, that you probably can't answer, but I'll ask anyway. When I watched the planning board meeting, the 4-1, there wasn't really any discussion by the 1. Did you get any sort of indication of why they didn't approve?
Yeah, so we did have two people speaking opposition. There were some property owners there to the south and the east. On this area, you can maybe see a pond there, right above that 272 Allen Road. So most of the discussion was kind of had about that close proximity to the pond and everything like that, concerns about runoff and the dam, yes.
So you think that's the reason the planning board...
Yeah, he didn't specify exactly when he made his motion in the negative, but that was kind of the main things discussed, so if I had to take a guess, that probably would be it.
Any other questions at this point? If not, then I'll open the public hearing. And with this hearing, no one signed up to speak. So we will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, do we have a motion pertaining to case 2025-12?
Mr. Chair, I move that case 2025-12 be approved as presented. Along with...
I'm sorry.
Along with adjustments and consideration.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Richardson for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Callum. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye. Any opposed? Okay. I'll turn it back over to Adam Barr for 2025-13.
Okay, sir. So next up for us tonight is 25-13. This is going to be a request to rezonate from neighborhood commercial to residential agriculture. For the record, the tax pin is 793104833120, and the property is going to be addressed as 120 Haynes Road. Again, this is coming to you as a conventional rezoning, so all the same caveats we mentioned earlier there. And the planning board also saw this at the same meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval. You can see, this is going to be on the southwestern kind of side of the county, along 158. And here's the zoning map. The majority of the area is going to be residential agriculture with a subdivision kind of to the north of the property. We do have some commercial existing there, close to Price Mill Road, and a little bit further to the east as well. This is an aerial of the property, and as you can see, the majority of the area is wooded, plenty of residential, for the most part. And this is going to be also in the G1, according to the... proximity of other even more intense zoning districts there in the area. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is here. They didn't sign up to speak, but if there's any questions that they can answer, they'd be happy to.
Last question.
I have one, Adam, that you probably can't answer, but I'll ask anyway. When I watched the planning board meeting, the 4-1, there wasn't really any discussion by the one. Did you get any sort of indication of why they didn't approve?
Yeah, so we did have two people speaking opposition. There were some property owners there to the south and the east. On this area, you can maybe see a pond there right above that 272 Allen Road. So most of the discussion was kind of had about that close proximity to the pond and everything like that. Concerns about runoff. And the dam, yes.
So you think that's the reason the planning board?
Yeah, he didn't specify exactly when he made his motion in the negative, but that was kind of the main things discussed, so if I had to take a guess, that probably would be it.
Any other questions at this point? If not, then I'll open the public hearing. And with this hearing, no one signed up to speak, so we will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, do we have a motion pertaining to case 2025-12?
Mr. Chair, I move that case 2025-12 be approved as presented.
Motion.
Along with, I'm sorry, along with adjustments and consideration.
Yes, sir. So we have a motion by Commissioner Richardson for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kellum. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of "ah." Any opposed? Okay. We'll turn it back over to Adam Barr for 2025-13.
Yes, sir. So next up for us tonight is 25-13. This is going to be a request to rezonate from neighborhood commercial to residential agriculture. For the record, the tax pin is 793104833120, and the property is going to be addressed as 120 Haynes Road. Again, this is coming to you as a conventional rezoning, so all the same caveats we mentioned earlier there, and the planning board also saw this at the same meeting and voted unanimously for, to recommend approval. You can see, this is going to be on the southwestern kind of side of the county along 158. And here's the zoning map. The majority of the area is going to be residential agriculture with a subdivision kind of to the north of the property. We do have some commercial existing there, close to Price Mill Road, and a little bit further to the east as well. This is a aerial of the property, and as you can see, the majority of the area is wooded, plenty of residential for the most part. And this is going to be also in the G1, according to the land use plan designated as low-density growth area, and generally, that categorization is going to be looking for residential agriculture, RP, RM, those kind of zoning designations. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions at this time? If not, we will open the public hearing. And again, no one signed up to speak, so with that, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion pertaining to case 2025-13?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve zoning map amendment 2520-13 as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Barrow.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kellum. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of "ah." Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the performance measure report for the past fiscal year, fiscal year 2024 to 2025. This is a program we've had in the county for quite a while, but this is my first time getting to come to speak to you all about it. So I'm sure many are familiar with the program, but for anyone who is not, I want to give you just a quick overview. The main priority of this program is to improve services by setting clear and measurable goals for our departments that align with the vision, mission, and strategic focus areas that you all set during the budget process. We do this by reinforcing countywide accountability and transparency, as well as rewarding departments for saving taxpayer dollars. Here I have a graph of the achievement for our departments split into five different service areas. As you can see, each of these service areas has reached and exceeded our 51% threshold for achievement. Our threshold is 51% because the goals that we come up with with departments are stretch goals. They are going above and beyond the regular call-to-service, not just doing the regular everyday tasks of their job. Here I have a couple of highlights that I would love to brag on. Obviously, there are plenty of departments we would love to brag about all night, but three are EMS, foster care, and public information that went above and beyond what we've asked them to in their goals. We meet with departments every year during the budget process to review their goals, make sure they're not too easy, but also not too hard, and they're always evolving as we get new ideas and new people come in. Something else we were able to implement this year is the performance measure audit. That's an opportunity for us to take a deep dive into the data that supports the reporting that departments give to us. That's furthered our appreciation for the work that they do, as well as allowed us to make some of those fine-tuned changes to the measures to really capture the work that they're doing. Those changes are in your packet under further changes for 2026 or available online for anyone who's interested. All that being said, that takes us to the shared savings portion of the program. Our shared savings program works in tandem with our performance measurement program to reward departments for the achievements that they make. So we take about 20% of the unspent operating funds throughout the fiscal year where departments are able to save or be innovative with their money, and that money can be redispersed if we reach that 51% achievement threshold. That money can be used with a little bit more discretion from the departments, but obviously, the county manager still has oversight over those spending. And this year, our request is to transfer $156,000 for the shared savings program. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you've had in your packet some suggested changes to goals. Are there questions at this point in time by any of you? Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, primarily for public information. You use the terminology easy versus hard. I would like to say easy versus reasonable, but that begs the question about the sort of criteria that you're using. How do you determine that criteria for setting 51% or whatever you choose to set it at?
We want to make sure that the goals are measurable, that that's something that anyone looking at the data could come to the same conclusion about. We want to also make sure that they are relevant and pertain to the work that you all prescribe for that department to be doing.
Thank you, Ms. Leggett.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question.
Commissioner Hall.
What I'm looking at in our packet, of course, I see the budget revision request for basically $456,000 almost. Then I see the measure recommendations, which is the text document, and then following that, I see the performance measure report for last year. At some, at some point, will we be looking at these items in the report and amending those or updating these? Would now be the time, or would that be at a later time?
Well, I think now's the time to at least indicate that you've got some suggested changes. Now whether, I don't know that they'll be able to craft the necessary language tonight, so some of that may be brought back to us maybe at the December meeting for adoption as far as any changes beyond what's presented here.
This is, this is a working document. If you do see metrics that you would like to add or delete or modify, you're more than welcome to, because these are what departments came up to meet your goals and your mission of the county leaders. So if you have any, please provide those to me. We can amend at December, or December meeting, and then it's, again, it's like your UDO is an ongoing document that we can change when we need to.
So as far as crafting these, they were not necessarily crafted by administration. They were crafted by the department and then submitted to administration?
That's correct.
Do you have any ideas at this point, Commissioner Hall, or?
Well, I guess I do. Well, one of the questions I've got, of course, is human resources, 3.1. Safety risk management will perform a safety audit on at least 50% of occupied county facilities to ensure employee and visitor safety, with every occupied facility being inspected within two years. I'm wondering if we can up that just a little bit. We've achieved it three years. Last year, we missed it a little bit, but, so that clearly looks like, in my opinion, we could up that a little bit, and again, it's a stretch goal, so I wouldn't be upset with that. Another one would be the registered deeds office, and I'll provide this to our manager at a later time as well, but the registered deeds office. Item 1.3, it says accurately index 100% of real estate records on the permanent index within 30 days. This will be measured by not having to record any administrative notices for that time period. I think we could bump that down to 20 days. And then item 2.1, he's accepting at least 500 passport applications. He's exceeded that every year, so I think we could bump that to 750 for that department. We've got admin and civil records under the sheriff's department, and I'd like to investigate, see if we could have a goal to get concealed carry applications returned within 45 days instead of 60 days or more. So if we can investigate that, I would appreciate that. I think we've talked about some others. I didn't write them down. I think I'd given Lance a couple earlier, and we can go through those. But anyway, that's all I can remember at the moment. I should have made better notes.
Well, what I would suggest on other items, as far as bringing that back in December, is try to get any of that to Lance or administration. How much lead time do you need? I mean, I.
Within 10 days, they can get it to me. 10 days, is that good? 10 days, be fine. And we could craft it, and for some reason, if it's not measurable, we'll let you know. If it is, we can change it to make it measurable.
Figuring out that timeframe, keep in mind, next week, we're closed for a couple of days, and then we come back, so we're losing.
Yeah, so if you can get it to us next five or six days, that would be fantastic.
I just want to make sure that you got time to get it organized for that meeting.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, and then I've got some things, and, you know, it has been an issue for us over the years. And so in speaking with Lance, I believe that we've had instances where things end up in the press that have been actually covered in department head meetings, specifically benefits that the county offers. And since we've got somebody that just doesn't send anybody to department head meetings, they've chosen not to participate, but yet they complain in the press as far as some of those benefits. And I think we need to have something as far as attendance of department head meetings, especially since this is more a reward for departments that is shared throughout county government. I mean, it's not just department-specific.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd also add that that's budget meetings as well.
Yes, sir. I believe they actually clarify or have different levels of budget meetings. And in speaking with Lance and with Derek, is, you know, we do have a department head that hasn't participated in budget meetings, I think, since I've been on the board, until actually the very public ones. But you meet and have what you consider major budget meetings with department heads. Is that?
That's correct.
At least every other department head. Is that right?
Every department head, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, we've got one that doesn't attend.
That's correct.
Okay. So what do you consider a major budget meeting?
Definitely the first meeting, and then after we make cuts, between the first meeting is important, and then the very last meeting before they present to me, those two meetings are vital.
Okay. And you consider those the major budget meetings?
Yes, sir. In between, we could meet with their staff. That's not that big of a deal.
Okay. And so I think we need to have that included as well, as far as department heads shall meet with all major budget meetings, with, meet with county administration. Then certainly, Ms. Efer touched on one thing tonight that we certainly have been dinged on repeatedly, and that is the rounds within the jail. You know, we had an explanation provided to us at the last meeting that somebody asked for a jumpsuit, they then leave those rounds. Well, jumpsuits don't ding us on reports. Not making the rounds dings us on reports. And so I think it'd be good to allow the county manager to request at least quarterly just random dates and get those reports, and supporting documentation if rounds are missed in accordance with state legislation, and that should be provided to the county manager within two business days of that request. And of course, he can make that whatever date he chooses for each quarter. We do have to have some accountability because that has been extremely costly. And then the, another thing that we've had that's been a major issue that has been extremely costly is failing to report incidents. It's a shame that we have to put this in as a goal, but that ought to be 100%. And I believe with, with these reports, as far as the incident reports, that is something that any death should be reported within some short amount of time of occurrence, and I believe, Lance, you had suggested maybe eight hours, and I would defer to, you know, risk management and, as far as what's a reasonable amount of time, but that is certainly reasonable to at least make that initial report. And then any other incident would have to be reported within 24 hours. Now, we have set up a daily email that, you know, all other departments we haven't had an issue with, but we, we've generated a daily email to the sheriff's office that is yes or no. And for a while, we had an issue with that daily email where they would click no incidents to report, and then there were incidents. Sometimes they'd write things on the bottom, sometimes they wouldn't, and that was actually on the next page. But we fixed that to where if now, if they check no, then they can't type anything out. But they need to report any, it should be, we'll report all death-related issues within eight hours of occurrence and within 24 hours for all other incidents that may be deemed a liability to the safety and risk manager. This has been something that has cost us dearly, just the failing to report. You've seen the amount it's cost us with insurance. You've seen what happened to our deductible, and this is just notifying risk management of any incident. So on that one, I would think that if they fail to report something, they would lose all of their shared savings, every last bit of it, simply because what's happened by failing to report, we're paying $190,000 more each year, and the deductible went up $190,000. So, you know, they've taken money from other departments, taken money from the taxpayer. They need to be held accountable. Another issue that really protects their employees, I believe you've indicated to me that sometimes they don't report changes in staff. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
And?
Not in a timely manner.
Yeah, and so there's been incidents that that has overlapped pay periods. Is that right?
That's correct.
That hurts the officers. That impacts their pay when it overlaps pay period, and, you know, something hasn't been reported as far as any promotion, and of course, could go the other way. But, so inform HR about new hires before they're hired, resignations, retirements, demotions, promotions, suspensions, or any other change with staff within one business And then last week, I believe county administration has set up an accident review board. Is that right? And with that accident review board, there was, you know, we've got how many vehicles?
Three, over 300.
Yeah, and so accidents are going to happen when we've got that many vehicles on the road, and it's going to happen with every department. But if you could describe for the public the purpose of that accident review board?
The purpose is basically just to hold the employees accountable, make sure they've done everything they could to prevent the accident if they couldn't. And we have a scaling measure as zero to five, five, 10, 10, 15. Zero to five, basically, they just get talked to. Five to 10 is they have to go through training, they have to go through various different projects all the way up to termination.
And of course, with that department, you know, we don't have any say over who we hire, who we fire, you know, any, we don't have any say over that, but there was an accident, and I believe your initial response from the sheriff was he wasn't going to participate in that accident review board. Is that right?
What I understand, yes, sir.
And then I guess he changed his mind and then did send the officer later, so, you know, I don't know, wasn't privy to any of those conversations, but, I mean, it's something that certainly. it's something that certainly helps establish policy as far as anything that we've got countywide. And I believe that if a vehicle accident occurs and is deemed to be an accident that needs to be reviewed by the accident review board, then the staff member involved shall attend the accident review 100% of the time. And of course, this is, I mean, what's your...
It doesn't happen often, it's just, you know, if they're in pursuit or if EMS is in pursuit, deer strikes, that stuff doesn't come to the review board. It's things that are out of the ordinary that come to the review board.
Okay, all right. And, I mean, we can include these tonight or put it in the packet for the next meeting. However...
I'd like to see it brought at the next meeting if possible. Let staff review it.
If you all can give me in writing what you need, just send it to me.
Yep. All right. Now, I believe we can, with what was in the packet, go ahead and adopt those and make whatever motions we need for tonight and then bring these back for an additional, take it up at the next meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir, Commissioner Barrow.
Alabia, if you could maybe help for the public a little bit with this save county dollars incentivizing. How much money annually have we been saving the county by doing this program?
That would depend year to year. This year, it was almost $1 million in savings. That'll fluctuate, but this year, we were at almost $1 million. There was $190,000 eligible for shared savings, and then based on the achievement, the county across all departments earned that 160.
Okay, so basically, we are redistributing 160 for good work off of $1 million?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I believe we would need a motion to approve the changes to the fiscal year '26 performance measures, the updated performance measure policy, and the shared savings transfer. I believe we can do that all with one motion. Do we have that motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Howell.
Second.
Commissioner Kellum. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next are items of new business. Do you have anything, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll go to Commissioner Comments. Now, Commissioner Kellum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With Thanksgiving approaching, if you know any families in need that you can reach out and help, please do so. Giving a little bit to a family that may would need can mean so much at this time of year. I'd also like to thank Levi Sharp for the pledge of allegiance tonight and Carly as well for her great achievements in softball. I'd also like to thank all the seniors who participated in the games here lately and all their achievements as well. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. Yeah, it's always nice to be able to recognize achievements of folks in the community. So it's very nice to see all those folks here tonight. Yeah, Thanksgiving's coming, just look at, we have so much to be thankful for. We appreciate all the good things that go on in our community. So many times, that's all you hear is the negative, or you only look at negatives, but there are a lot of positives, so we appreciate that. Just pause, take a moment over the next few weeks and just think of the things that you can be thankful for. That's it, Mr. Chair, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Well, certainly, I appreciate everybody being here tonight. That's always a pleasure, and I appreciate having conversation with you, Mrs. Eifert, and finding out folks are watching on the live stream there. Roy makes your work worthwhile and reminds us that the entire county is interested in what we're doing, so thank you very much for that. I'd also like to recognize an individual that works in our environmental health organization, one of our coordinators, Mr. Jacob, goes by Jake Williams. In this life, he's been with us since 2015. He started with us and then spent some time in Guilford County and chose to come back to here. He's our authority on wastewater, and trust me, we have lots of questions about wastewater, and we have to inspect a lot of it. But Jacob has been with us doing yeoman's labor and serves in supervisory capacity as well, and so many thanks to Jacob and all of our employees. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Barrow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For everyone out there watching, you may have already seen, but we are currently trying to get people to sponsor our children that are in foster care and our protected adults for Christmas wish lists for people that we have in our custody. If anyone would be interested in sponsoring a child, you can reach out to Mandy Bruins at 336-342-1394, and that's extension 7021. Or if you'd like to sponsor one of our protected adults, if you could reach out to Bridget Yoho at 336-342-1394, extension 7170. Again, I will continue my plea also for foster families, and we still have about 180 children in foster care, and we are in desperate need of foster families. While everyone is celebrating with their families this year, just think about the kids that aren't able to do that. And these people that I just told you to reach out to, you can also reach out to them for more information regarding foster care. I'd also like to give my thanks. I had an interesting week last week. I was coming home from work on Tuesday, and as I was coming down my dead-end road that I live on, there were sheriff's cars blocking the street, and they informed me that they were attempting to serve a warrant on someone and had turned into a standoff. They escorted me home, but to all the sheriff's deputies out there that had to work long shifts last Tuesday, thank you for your efforts, and luckily, that ended peaceful for everyone out there. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for tuning in tonight. I do have one request of the county manager. There was an unfortunate press conference last week, but during that, there was a question that was posed by a reporter about a bank account that had been discovered by the county. And that discovery was this past spring. The sheriff did acknowledge that account, indicated that he had records for that account. I believe he indicated that account has existed since he's been sheriff. I'm aware that he's handed over a few years' worth of records, since our role is that over the budget, and we're the ones that's supposed to be, you know, authorizing expenditures, and we're the ones that have the authority to authorize setting up bank accounts. I think we need to ask for those records. If you could submit that request. Okay. So our next meeting is December the 1st. I know my eyes are not deceiving me, but it says 5:30 on here. Did something change? Okay, that's fine. All right. At 6:30 here in the Commissioner chambers. So do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, we've got to go into closed session. So we do have a closed session tonight, don't know if there will be any action taken when we come out of that. That closed session is pursuant to 143-31811A1 to approve minutes and 143-31811A6 to discuss personnel. So do we have that motion, gentlemen?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Barrow?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kellum. So we are in... Oh, all in favor, let me know by the sound of aye.
Aye.
So we're in closed session.